George Morris.
Jim Robinson.
Pete Pickles.
Rachel McNamara.
Martha Taylor.
Who is our town planner. So we're going to make a little change for those of you who might be at home and watching and looking at the agenda. We're going to start with item that's on the, where is it?
It's on the second page.
Under appearances Jenny Ford of Seacoast Canines submission of a special permit application for doggy daycare, including dog play groups and dog training at 34 Downfall Road. So I wonder if you could just come up and explain what you're proposing to do, and I think you just have to leave off your application form.
Okay.
It would be helpful if you could do that.
Just clarify 35 Downfall Road would be the address.
Okay.
Just hand everybody.
Now this is required as a special permit because it's not, this use is not allowed.
It's not allowed by right.
By right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm applying for the special permits so that we can expand our current business, which is currently a home occupation business, to, with those special permits, so that we could just expand our services and help more staff stay on the property. So not like an all-day doggy daycare, but a four-hour training playgroup that would require more people to actually be on the farm.
Will there be people at night?
No.
Keep dogs at night?
No, no boarding overnight.
Okay.
So it would just essentially fall between school hours, and I have it all written with a summary, which I make it easier to understand, but because that's more than a home occupation, we decided that the doggy daycare permit made the most sense to cover the services that we'd like to offer.
And so when you said bringing more folks in, how many employees do you think you might have?
That would actually be on the farm would be about five.
How many do you have now?
We have two that come to the farm, but I just like, I'm a current dog walkers, so I have 11 employees, but it would just help us consolidate.
Oh, okay.
The occupation.
So is all that information in your application?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions or just accept this? Jen, you have any questions? Or is it this time? No. George?
I don't.
Martha, any words of wisdom for us?
No, we've had several conversations and back and forth trying to refine the narrative and the application. And Jenny's been working with her uncle who's an attorney.
Okay, good.
And so I think there are some waivers because it doesn't really fit into all of our specialty requirements, like the site plan and architectural plans and all that kind of stuff.
Okay. So you see as a schedule here, we'll accept it and then set a subsequent meeting?
Yeah, so set a public hearing date.
Where do we have?
So our next meeting is August 1st, and there actually is enough time to add a just. The ad would have to go in the paper tomorrow, so I would have to get you the language and you would have to submit.
Okay.
Are we looking August 1st for vacations and stuff? All right, all right.
No, I'm not here August 1st.
No, we do have another public hearing that night at All the Way, public hearing.
You guys here August? All right, so we have four. Okay, we can do August 1st.
August 1st. So, motion to accept.
So moved.
A second please.
Second.
Any further discussion about setting the subsequent meeting and public hearing on August 1st at what time?
So it's 7:45.
The first one is at 7:15 and what, that's All the Way, which is our proposal, so yeah, 7:45.
So we need a motion to accept.
A motion to accept, this, the, add 7:45? George?
So moved.
All right, in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're there. So we'll see you on the 1st.
Okay, should I leave these for you?
Yeah, you leave them with Martha, please. Thanks Jenny for coming by.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity. So Jenny, do you know where, have you had discussions with your neighbors about this and how are they feeling about it?
My two closest neighbors, yes.
Okay.
Yep, and they're.
It'd be nice if they could send us a little note or whatever, or show up at August 1st.
They, yes, both of them said they would come.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'll send you the language for legal ad tomorrow plus the contact information.
Okay.
And to send it back.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
So where's Tom?
He's in the hallway. Shall we get my guy?
If you could. Did you have time to pull all of the various back and forth on this between Joe and, or just me and Mark?
Yes, and there's been a little bit more from the fire chief.
I've got the fire chief.
There's more.
Oh, more from the fire chief.
Yeah, more from the fire chief, because they submitted.
Okay. I think we just want to have them go over where they are with the various back and forth. Most of the issues seem to be focused on stormwater and the site. Didn't we also ask for elevation?
Yes.
Did, so let's see, let's see, look at it. Tom, are you?
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening. So I think we'll leave a little bit up to you guys of maybe bringing us up to date on some of the things we asked for the last meeting, as well as the back and forth that we've seen between our engineer and Mark, and where we might be with that. Some things seem to be clearly fine, and other things might be hanging out there, but we need to talk them through and make sure we don't go. Thanks. So as you, as, so. So what I'm going to do is open the continued public hearing for site plan review application Park River Environmental Studies, building map R15 parcel 11 applicant, the Governor's Academy, One Elm Street in Byfield. And as you come up and talk, just remind yourselves to keep your name and address, that would be helpful, okay? So whoever you want to, Tom, you go first?
Mark is gonna.
Okay. Thanks, Martha.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name again is Mark O'Drey from Meridian Associates. I'm a professional engineer here in Massachusetts. And so since the last meeting, the opening planning board hearing, as you know, we had a sidewalk where the board got to see the location of the building. It was staked out, we actually flew some balloons at the locations of the building corners, which hopefully was helpful. And a couple of other things, Betsy from Flansburgh has put together some renderings of the view of the building from a couple of vantage points that the board had also asked for. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, your consultant, Joe Soraka, had reviewed the plans, and he did provide a comment letter back to us through Martha, and we revisited the plans, the calculations, revised things, got it back to Mr. Soraka, and had, you know, towards the end of last week, beginning of this week, and I believe, you know, he is now satisfied with the responses, and has issued a new letter to the board, actually dated today. And so I also, since that time, had submitted revised drawings and calculations to the board that we can go through and whatever, I'll definitely give a quick summary of everything for you. We can then go through in more detail if you'd like. Also, today, we received some additional comments from the fire chief, and we responded to those comments today and believe we have addressed those to his satisfaction as well.
Okay, so that's above and beyond the letter that I had seen and downloaded earlier today, am I right?
Yes, it's the second round.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it was an email exchange.
All right.
So the revisions are actually in the package that I put on there.
Okay. So fine, I would appreciate you going through some of, because I don't mind telling you that as I went through Joe's letter and saw the comments that he had made, and then went back to the plans that I had, which were unfortunately small, I had a tough time understanding all of the various ponds and things like that, to the extent to which you can, you know, to kind of show where those were and what responses you've made to them.
Absolutely, all right. The, what I'd like to do is go through Joe's comments, like right from the top, and kind of work down through, if that's okay, instead of jumping around.
Are you going to start with his current letter or the 20th letter?
I'm going to start with his letter of July 11th, because what he did was he reiterated all of his comments back from the original letter and just issued a response to them.
That's fine.
And we also provided a response letter to the board that, I'm not sure if there's copies in your packet of that, but I do have, I see something with a version underlined. Yeah, okay, great. So our detailed responses to each of those comments were, you know, not articulated back onto Joe's letter, but what's important is his final responses, so, but I can, I'd be happy to go, like I said, go through. So the first one was regarding, and this was, you know, definitely a valid point. You may recall that the landscape improvements along the Emptons Drive, off of Middle Road up to the maintenance buildings, were shown to be basically, you know, future improvements. Now, your consultant had a valid point in that we were taking advantage of these areas that we were showing the landscape islands to be taking impervious cover, converting it to, in some cases, pervious material. We were taking advantage of that for the stormwater calculations. And so it was a valid point that to be able to take advantage of those for the calculations, they needed to be built. So what we did in consultation with the, with Governor's Academy was decided to, the ones that were showing pavement removal to kind of define the driveways better, to green up into landscape screen along the driveway, along the maintenance buildings, the ones that basically were going to be utilized for stormwater, those will be constructed as part of the project to make the islands by taking out the impervious material, putting pervious back down, you know, and then actually doing the plant material as well. So the only thing that's potentially deferred now, subject to getting funding and whatnot, is the plant material along the driveway that is already in landscape areas. So to kind of green it up and to, you know, beautify it coming in. So all of the, all of the areas that needed to be converted to pervious to reduce the runoff would be, are now proposed as part of the project, you know, the.
But what is left off is some landscaping, as you were just pointing to, right? And because you, Tom, you don't have the money for that right now, is that right?
Well, right now, no, but we probably will, it just sort of seems outside of the scope of the project, and we probably will do those improvements at the time of it, but they don't seem to be necessary.
Only because, you know, it's your property, I guess, and you can do with it as you will in many respects, but if you are putting forward a landscaping plan as part of this, if we had it as a condition of approval that you did do it within expedite of time, that would be okay?
Yep, and I, what we wanted to do though is get it on the drawing so it could be approved by the board to allow it to be constructed at the appropriate time, so. Because that's definitely the intent, you know, is to build it.
Okay.
So the, another comment was that in the original calculations, at one point we considered some grading in between the switchbacks, that in the calculations, we had presumed that that, those areas would be grass cover. And the, it's actually conservative in the stormwater approach in that a grass surface, believe it or not, has a higher runoff coefficient than a wooded condition. So you expect a little bit more runoff off a line area than you would off a wooded, you know, so. But what the, your consultant had suggested is that those areas be identified on the plan as grass areas. So it's, what we decided to do is that, you know, the plan that got submitted to the board even last time had these retaining walls to be able to retain as much of the woodland and the trees as possible. So what we did is put the calculations, you know, made those more accurately reflect what is proposed on the drawing. So the, the calculations, in effect, have reduced the amount of runoff going because of the Parker River, because we've switched it back to woods from grass, if that makes sense. So it's, the calculations reflect the drawing right now. And secondly, I may be jumping ahead a little bit on this one, but your consultant, there's one little pond right here basin that he wanted, he suggested that the water going directly, runoff directly to that be shown as a separate sub-water shed, sub-catchment area, which we did in the calculations also. The, so we're looking at, this is, you know, 5P, this is 2P, this is 1P. So you're going to see some, when we get into more detailed drawings, you'll see some changes to those that I can mention.
All right.
Something had suggested that, you know, realistically, we're working around the building, there's going to be a need for, you know, machinery to be operating et cetera, and had suggested that we show a limited clearing area on the plan. I'm not sure that Joe had realized that we had already submitted to the plan, fed it to the board, a plan, we submitted this last time on the 6th, I think it was, that, June 6th, showing what trees were going to be removed. So that, we've identified to the board the, essentially the limits of clearing of mature trees.
I think his point was not so much that, maybe I'm wrong, but, but it was the level of clearance in order for the construction to incur, and he wasn't sure of that if I take it into account.
But the, it is, I think as we mentioned last time, it's fairly early in the process with the school on this project. The next step after approvals were obtained by the town would be to get a construction manager on board. Once we have the construction lines on board, we can start talking about those construction logistics and about what cleaning limits are needed and whatnot.
And so that, and there's two or three others that would maybe be a condition of Martha approving them along with Sam or something like that, right?
Before showing that.
Yeah, so I'm okay.
Before showing something like that, we want that in, so.
Yes, okay.
And just jumping ahead, you know, having stabilized construction entrances, the, and then another thing was the material and equipment storage areas.
Right.
Those things, this project is large enough that it's going to require a, it's subject to the NFTs, construction general permit requirements, it's disturbing more than an acre. So we're going to have to prepare a stormwater pollution prevention plan anyway for the project. All of these kinds of details need to be worked into the SWIP. So that, again, once.
So when you revised the stormwater plan, then that's submitted to Doug again, all right? And then Doug informs Sam, but it's not our call, it's conservation.
Yeah, and.
Have you seen that, have you seen that stormwater, that concom?
Well, now with concom, you, the state stormwater regulations, if you are subject to a SWIP, you can, you can check that off on your, on your stormwater checklist saying that the stormwater pollution prevention plan is going to be prepared, and the detailed erosion and sediment control stuff will be part of that, that document, and that's acceptable.
So what we have seen is some, the document is 101 pages long.
Yeah, that's our stormwater management report, which will become part of the SWIP eventually.
Okay.
Yep. All right, so the, a couple, oh, one thing on the turnaround. Again, this is a very valid point. I'm a little embarrassed about this one, actually. So the turnaround, we discovered was that the grade at the end of the turnaround was lower than the basin, so we could not get the stormwater from the turnaround into the basin, that's been revised. So this has been changed, where this was, you know, raised up behind the maintenance building, and then kind of ramped down off of the end of it, down to the existing gravel area. So that area will now be able to drain into the stormwater basin, so that. And then there was other things, like, you know, some, some of the detailing on this was not quite consistent with the calculations, that has been changed. The, we did add, at one point, this, originally this basin was, had an out-of-control structure here that would connect it into, eventually into the stormwater basin down here. What we did was, with all the reconfiguration here, we ended up putting another out-of-control device here that goes down to what we call design point three, this is design point four. So we're splitting the flow in a couple of different directions, and so we are not increasing P grades of runoff or volumes in this area or in this area with that splitting and having that additional fat payment going into that basin. So your consultant has signed off on that at this point. That's comments one and two on the grading drainage facilities. Rinse and inverts on the drain structures, as well as the sanitary structures, are all on the plan at this point. And that was to his satisfaction. The water lines coming into the building, we had coming into the, into this part of the building originally, I think Joe, Joe just wanted some clarification on that. So working with Flansburgh and their consultants, we are now showing the water surfaces coming into the pump room of the building right here, so that has been reconfigured on the plan. And some of the fire chief comments are related to that area too, I'll get to that in just a minute. The, your consultant had suggested, it's a good point, that the test pits be located on the drawings. So you can, you can see all those at this point. They were in all the stormwater calculations, but he suggested that they be added to these drawings as well, which is, you know, definitely agreeable, so that was appropriate. The rectangular weir, it's, you know, again, basically a pond. Yeah, it's pond 5P up there.
Right up there.
Yeah, so that has been added. Again, a valid point is that the grading on the plan had the berm lower than was shown in the stormwater accounts, so we've adjusted the plan to be consistent with the calculations. The test pits pond 2P is down here. That pond with that basin, pond, whatever you want to call it, these are designed to drain dry, but pond is a hydrocath, stormwater term, we tend to call them basins, but, so the pond, basin are kind of interchangeable, but this basin, the little biointention basin down here, Joe had mentioned that we did not have a test pit in that location, and he's correct. That was added after the stormwater testing was done, because we realized we needed to add a little basin there for a couple of different reasons, for stormwater management, plus to, you know, get, we wanted to get some water in a controlled fashion down into this isolated wetland, which we can talk about a little later as well. So we, what we had agreed to, you know, too, is that we, you know, as a condition of the board's approval, to have a confirmatory test pit done at that basin when equipment is back on site, you know, for construction. I think that was acceptable to Joe.
Yeah.
We often do that, and then if there's, if there's any modifications that need to be made to the design as a result of that soil testing, then that would be appropriate to bring back to, to the board.
Okay.
The, and if the school has, you know, to full disclosure, our letter back to Joe, we said it's a possibility that if the school ever has equipment on the site for other purposes, we might be able to do a test pit at that point too, which might predate construction. So either way, we'll, we're absolutely agreeable to having, doing a soil test in that area. The elevations, again, on, that were basically typos on these two little out-of-the-weirs were too high, so they were not consistent with the calculations, so those have been revised on the plan to be consistent with the counts. The, let's see.
Next page.
Okay.
That sounds like that's.
That's the spillway we just talked about, so just keep it light. I believe that's my phone ringing very quietly, I apologize for that. Okay.
So I'm looking at Joe's response to this, and so is this another one, Martha, where when they come up with the construction docs, they just need to present them and you can take a look at them?
Yeah, I could probably do that.
I think that's, I would make that as a question.
But to, I do want to point out that I know the board at our first hearing, you know, was hoping to get some more information on, you know, tree and plant species and sizes and whatnot. Joe had mentioned that in his letter as well, and we were, we were already putting together a plant schedule, a representative plant schedule that is on the revised plans. So the only thing that we would typically defer to construction is to start identifying specific numbers of plants, you know, in, you know, for bidding purposes. But there's, we select from the palette of material.
And so you have this in your latest submission, you have that?
Yes, that's there. The plan doesn't identify where each of those is going to be going.
Well, what it does do is calls out, like, for example, in this basin, it calls out a, like, you know, seven or eight different plant material that could be in there. You then go to that legend and you can see what those, what those would be. Like, for example, these trees right here, you know, it identified trees and shrub material, for example, AR, which would be the trees, and AR is a red maple.
All right, and does it have the size of the?
Yes, yep.
Okay, all right.
So we, we're just going to get much more specific for construction drawings, that's the only thing that we need to know. But the revised plans absolutely have plant palette for species and sizes of trees, shrubs, ground cover, there's anonymous grasses. So for the fire chief. It's probably a little easiest to see on here, but when we first met with the very town officials and the chief, he had asked that there would be enough room at the front of the building to, well, first of all, be able to drive up, a truck up the, you know, the entrance pathway, which if you recall, part is going to be like a stone dust path with the outside being grass paper. So it looks visually like a narrow pedestrian path, but in reality, with the grass pavers, it's drivable for fire apparatus and whatnot. So he wanted it widened at the building to be able to have two trucks side by side. Now, on the revised plans, he, from July 6th, he decided he wanted a little bit more room than we had shown on the plan. So we, today we widened that from 23 feet up to 30 feet, but kept the pathway the same, but just widened the grass paper area. And we also widened it back a bit into here and provided a graphic to the chief that.
Where's senior hydra?
Well, we, it's, I've been down here currently, but we're proposing a hydrant dislocation and a hydrant dislocation. So I provided a graphic to the, to the chief that shows the two fire trucks with the revised configuration. He also wanted to know before I forget that the turnaround. He also wanted a note before I forget that the turnaround.
Yes, and there are actually two versions of that in the packets.
Yep, there are. Because we, we issued it, he then wanted to tweak to it, so we revised it again and sent it back. So, that's why there's two versions there. He wanted this area here to be, make sure that it was plowed in the winter and, and that there would not be any, you know, stuff put into that area that would obstruct it for, you know, fire apparatus and either staging or turning. So, that note has been added to the revised plans. So, the, the other matter relative to, coupled with the chief, was the location of the fire hydrid close to the building. We ended up flipping that to the other side of the, of the driveway, a pathway area to get more room and to get it out of the ledge area for access. It's within 50 feet of the, of the water entrance as required. Another question that had come up was if the, if the building was going to be sprinkling, and the answer is yes. Even though the building is, I, I believe, Betsy, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the standard is for, for a school building, 7,500 square feet requires sprinkling. This is less than that. So, but the, the, the school is planning and the architectural team are planning on, you know, Flansburgh and their consultants are providing a sprinkling building for various reasons. And so, there will be a sprinkler riser in the, inside the building. We do show the domestic line and fire service coming into the building. There'll be a fire, there'll be a fire department connection on that. And again, it's within 50, is a higher than 50.
I need to do a procedural thing. Hold on just for a second. So, we have a second public hearing tonight scheduled at 7:30, and I'm going to open that now, and then I'm going to go.
Actually, you can, you can just go.
Oh, I thought.
Just acknowledge it.
Acknowledge it. I'll acknowledge it. And we'll come back to it as soon as we're finished with this public hearing. Thank you very much. So, do you have some architectural plans or some images that you want to show us?
Evening. My name's Betsy Harold Garcia. I'm at Flansburgh, New York City. As requested, we prepared two views, one from the bridge and one along the river. On the road.
I mean, that's, one is closer. That's what one's like on the river.
Yes.
And the other's from the bridge. The thoroughbred bridge. So, the, the exterior material is mostly glass?
On the north and south, we're proposing glass for views to the river. And from campus, and then east and west would be solid. And still rather early in design, but considering natural materials that would replace either like a zinc coated copper similar to the color of the ledge, or a weathered wood or slats from Berkeley. And so, these just show the roofs popping up out of the trees. And then if you get closer, you can see some solid wall as well.
Let me just see your second. I think that's what this is.
Yes, with the water in the foreground.
Right. Okay.
And as, as helpful as those buildings were, it's hard to see all four of them. So, the size might be a little bit, a little bit off, but.
Any comments on what you're, what you're seeing?
Mike, can I understand where it is?
I think I see a balloon.
Yes.
You're right.
Only one.
Where's the balloon? It's gone.
The one with the river in the foreground, it's, it's just above the edge of the deck. It's a pink, little pink one.
So, there are, aren't there some neighbors who had a concern about what they'd see from the other side of the river?
Well, I'm not exactly on the river, but haven't owned it in the past yet, so we're kind of wondering. But we can't really see. So, I mean, we have to.
Why don't you hand up to the, to her so she can see it? Just for our record, your, your name and address is what?
It's Dale, me sir, and I'm at eight Maple Street.
Okay, thank you. Well, I appreciate the work you did to do this, and it does show, of course, in the, in the summertime. I guess in the winter, this might be a little bit more pronounced.
A little more, yes. Although I didn't, I didn't count the number of out-brains, but there are quite a number of out-brains on the site, and we'll do our best to cover as many as possible.
I think the choice of glass, as long as it's non, not reflective, is, is a pretty good idea. I mean, where are you, where are you guys in selecting architecture on this?
We're not there yet.
So, I'm not sure where we are. I mean, I think this is, we're not approving this at all because it's not architecture, right?
The term site plan.
But it's, and it's just site plan review. But I am in, I think it's helpful because our concern is really the view from the road. I mean, it's your property and what happens in it. But this is, all of a sudden, you realize that, well, you can see it from the river and you can see it from the road. Personally, I can do that right. Personally, I think it's a very interesting looking building. And I, I could think you'd be very proud of it, but these things are subjective, you know, and so I am interested, interested to hear what other people have to say about it. But I, I kind of like the, the building. I think it's exciting looking. So, there you go. Thanks. Appreciate it. Did you do any other drawings or any other elevation?
I simply wanted to bring you up to speed. Obviously, it's been a month and a half since we submitted the initial plans and the elevations and sections. So, as an update, we have the original plan, which is a very linear bar, not terribly dynamic. The school asked us to, to do a little more work, and so, in response to our turn slightly off the river, we've shifted those boxes slightly, six feet out here, six feet back here, Michael of the 200-foot setback. Right now, we're showing some expanded decks, but likely will get pulled in just for the logistics of having the path coming up the hill. And at the school's request, we're providing tentatively pending actual elevations accessible ramp onto this lower deck to be fully inclusive. And then, because the, the elevations had been, again, very, very linear.
Yeah, what you're showing here is not linear.
Correct, correct, yes. So, thinking more about the site, what it looks like, we've got huge ledge-up cropping. So, we just thought that it made a lot more sense to have these boxes take some of their form from the nature on the site. So, we've got an outcropping here pushed back from another here, and the one facing the school is pushed back closer to it. And then the wet lab is the most prominent and the widest. And obviously, on the ends, we have that solid material, whether it be a continuation of zinc coated copper down the sides to give that real sense of the mass, or whether it is more of a vertical wood rain screen.
Okay. Yeah, that's quite a bit more work than we saw. Anything further on what happens in the river and when that might happen before us and that?
No, no, we haven't done anything further with permitting for the dock or whatever anyone.
Okay. So, any, any further questions from board members on this? And I'll open up for further questions from the audience. Anybody who wants to raise an issue or make a comment? Yes?
Um, Dale, sir. I was interested, the glass, can it be a tinted glass or is that not possible so that it wouldn't be so bright coming from the river or for birds?
We would definitely.
I just know it happens, yeah.
So, typically, we'll use a frit, a ceramic frit, and that, it does duly. It shows birds that there's something there. It blocks solar glare, and so, you still get daylight through it because it's translucent, but it is also somewhat solid reflective. So, you can have like a 50% frit that kicks solar heat back, and it also masks light getting out because at nighttime it shows up as a dark dot on those, or a dark line. So, it prevents light getting through both directions, and it gives birds some sense of a plain.
Okay. So, I was thinking that when you're ready to do that, maybe a submission of some material that building inspector and town planner can take a look at to ensure that, you know, it's not a reflective kind of glass. And, I mean, everything you're saying makes sense. You want it to be recessive and you want it to kind of die, the light die on, on the facade. But, so if we could see something like that, nothing big, you know, whatever you probably do to present to Tom, it seems to me that would, we could see something that would be great.
As a condition of approval or?
No, well, I don't know. We're, I don't know. I don't think it's going to be a condition. I mean, it's your building. I mean, I.
I guess I'm wondering, are you requesting this as part of the public hearing process?
Yeah, I think it is. I think it is. Yeah, we just want to protect people looking at your building and make sure that it's not offensive. It doesn't look like this is going to be, but I just want to make sure it's okay. So, no other comments?
I just have one other thing for you. When you were talking about the entrance coming in there, you had to reconfigure that. Did that affect those parking spaces and not there? Did it get any of that? None of that had to get swamped all around on you already? But, great, thank you.
Okay. What do we do next?
All right. Well, we do have another comment. Yvonne Boswell submitted a letter on behalf of Parker River Clean Water Association.
Should I read it?
And it should be right into the record. Excuse me, Yvonne is here.
No, I have that.
It's in the packet.
Fire chief in Parkwood. I'll read this. We already have, do we have to read more of, of the fire chief's note or is that okay?
I'll read the first one.
The first one. Okay, we'll start with, from Doug John. Good afternoon, Martha. Regarding the proposed, proposed new building of Governors Academy, I have reviewed the revised plan. The only concerns that I have are the alleged that is on the front right side of the building. Because of that obstruction, I would like to request that the area to the left front of the building be widened to accommodate fire apparatus. Also, I noted that there is a hammerhead roadway along the driveway. I would request that this be cleared of snow in winter and kept clear all year so that we can stage apparatus in that location. Thank you for your time respectfully, Fire Chief. Then from Parker River Clean Water Association, Newbury Planning Board, Town Hall, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass., 121922. Dear Martha Taylor, I am writing on behalf of the Parker River Clean Water Association concerning the site plan, the new application for the Governors Academy proposed new building, the Parker River Environmental Studies Building. Proposed site plan and a site walk were conducted on June 6th and June 13th respectively. The site walk was the 13th. It was submitted to us on the 6th. PRWA, in its dedication to preserving and protecting the Parker River watershed and its environs, is interested in inquiring and commenting on an area of interest flagged on the proposed site plan as isolated depression not subject to jurisdiction. Our concerns are whether this isolated depression could possibly be a breeding habitat and would warrant the town to require further study. If this isolated depression is a vernal pool, then it would be subject to Wetland Protection Act, thus requiring a 100-foot buffer to be established on the map and the area to be subjected to, to protection and mitigation from the applicant. Is this area a consideration for the Newbury Conservation Commission to further comment? We applaud the applicant on maintaining the least removal of tree canopy on their proposed ADA compliant walkway from the building to the future proposed dock. Such action shows the Governors Academy's keen interest in understanding on the erosion effect of stormwater on impermeable structure situated on sloped riverbanks. PRWA is delighted to hear the, the commitment and dedication plans proposed by the Governors Academy for their environmental studies curriculum, development for the education for their students on the, on the rich marine biology and on the complex biological, sociological, environmental issues of the Parker River watershed. Thank you for your consideration and comments as regards Yvonne Boswell. Yvonne, do you want to say anything further?
Yes. Our main concern is that, as to what is that? What is that depression? Is it a vernal pool? Is it a slumming because of the slope of the hill, the riverbank slum? Those are the concerns we have. We know that in a lot of these areas, as we well understand, it's upward habitat. It's a very environmentally sensitive area. It's in the biocore zone for Massachusetts. It's a very lovely piece of land. So, we are quite concerned about that riverbank stability.
Can you help me to address that?
I think that'd be appropriate.
So, the environmental consultant, DeRosa Environmental, was not able to be here tonight because of a conflict, but they did provide us with some information. And first of all, back in 2016 into 2017, the, all the wetland resource areas on the project site were, went through the conservation commission as part of the ANRAD process. And the, that area was identified as an isolated wetland, not a bordering vegetated wetland for one thing. It was not identified at the time as a vernal pool. It was not ident, it was studied by the original, the previous engineer and found not to be isolated and subject to flooding. So, it currently, it doesn't have any buffers on associated with it. Now, DeRosa Environmental has been keeping an eye on that over the last couple of years, and they did look at that, that isolated area in 2017 and again this spring for purposes of whether it was, you know, potential vernal pool. And if I could, you know, read to the, to the board what, an email that we got from Mike DeRosa, I think it's, tells a lot. So, first of all, he provided the information for the previous consultants, you know, Cam and Engineering and Norris Environmental about the things that I just mentioned. And it was no, there was no reference through the ANRAD process that resulted in an ORAD by the commission of the vernal pool. And then he, he said, "We've inspected the isolated pool in two successive spring seasons, 2017 and 2018, and there is not evidence of vernal pool breeding activity. No egg masses, no tadpoles, nor other vernal pool species. It is our opinion that the hydro period, that is the length of standing water in the pool, is not long enough to allow vernal pool species to occupy the isolated wetland. Thus, we hope to improve that condition by routing some of the, the runoff water from the roof of the new building to the pool." And that's that, that little basin two P that I mentioned that would divert some flow to the, the isolated wetland area and some flow to the Parker River. So, that way, we're trying to actually promote more water going into the pool area that maybe could become a vernal pool and be, be another area of environmental study. So, there's a, there's a lot of, there's many components here, the, the little bio basin, that bio basin, the, the little one up by the, by the basin, up by the building, the crescent shaped line will be planted as a bio retention area. So, those area, you know, with landscape plantings and whatnot, that all these areas could be part of the, you know, the, you know, the, the studies at, at the building.
To help me understand these detention ponds, retention ponds are what you're going to make them into. Is that they're going to cascade to town? Is that what you're saying? They're going to overflow?
Yeah, I can, I can point one out too. Every one of the basins ultimately goes to. Every one of the basins ultimately goes to another area. And so this is the crescent-shaped basin that takes the roof runoff initially. That one would then cascade over and run down the hill in a controlled fashion to this what's called basin 2P. And then that splits flow by partly having part of it go to the isolated wetland and part of it go towards the Parker River. The other basin 1P that, you know, takes the, you know, the pavement area with treatment, pre-treatment, it goes into this basin and then is split to go add flow down to this wetland area here. And then also it overflows at this location outside the buffer zone to eventually work its way down into this wetland area. So every one of these basins takes runoff, pretreats it, recharges it, and then any overflow in the larger storms would cascade out, as you mentioned, to go down into other wetlands.
What's the capacity of the basin for what storm or is it?
Yeah, we do have outflow in the larger storms. There's the, that's a good question on this small one. I know this small little crescent doesn't have a lot of capacity. That's going to be overflowing in all storm events. So that will work its way down in the, you know, the two-year storm that's, you know, 3.2 inches of rain is going to be providing runoff down into this basin, which will then overflow into the other one. So they have outflow in all storm events.
So the ones that divert to, what is these look? I'm sorry, I wasn't on the sidewalk, so I'm asking questions that probably have seen. But what is the flow from, you go from the crescent to the first?
Yeah.
I forget who the answer is, but that's just 2P. That's the.
5P and 2P, yeah.
Yeah, and 2P is the isolated depression that's occurring right now. So.
That's very level down. That's at the bottom of the hill.
Okay, so when you get to that depression, what's the, what's the slope to the? Now, it can split, it can go to the river. What's the slope there? I can't see from here, so.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's going down, you know, initially you're looking at, you know, it's dropping about one foot and about 15 feet. So it's fairly gentle. And then once it starts getting closer to the river, where, you know, where the existing pathway is, that it starts getting a little steeper in there where it's like, at that location, it's maybe like, like, you know, one in eight, one in 10 feet. So.
So we do know that the crescent one will overflow. So you do know the crescent one will overflow in most respects?
Yep. Yeah. And that's kind of by design, you know, to, we're trying to promote water going down into those areas.
Right, it's like a storm. And so the 2P, that would be the one that you would have to remediate. You'd have to do something to not for that to be like a retention basin. Does everyone understand in this, that slump or depression, whatever it's called, isolated depression?
It's going to be, we're trying to mimic, there's actually, it's part of the notice of intent that's submitted to the Conservation Commission. There was a planting restoration plan as well into this basin. So there's truly an effort to enhance some of these areas to, you know, make them, you know, better plant material in there, more water going to it, you know, trying to promote all the things that you would want a wetland to have. And it's, but the, this is going to be a bio-retention area with some landscape plantings in it. Now, we select plantings that are, you know, consistent with the DEP Stormwater Handbook that are plants that can withstand some periodic inundation. So you don't, you don't want these things dying because, but the, but, you know, they're plants that are made to kind of thrive in those environments, but that can take runoff, can do some treatment runoff and then, you know, have that then discharge out of that basin. It'll have recharge into the ground. And that's where the test that I mentioned is important.
Right, so that hasn't been determined, but you're making the assumption, okay.
Yeah, but the elevation of the bottom of that is somewhat above the adjacent wetland area. So we're confident that we'll have a little bit of separation for recharge. It's not going to stay inundated. And then, but it's quite shallow. It's, you know, the bottom of the basin is, I think it's only about six inches deep before it actually spills over. Sorry, a little deeper, the 18 inches deep before it got up to the lip to spill over. So it's not, it's not very deep. And I mean, even this basin and near it is only about two feet deep also. So, I mean, these are not your traditional really deep detention bases. So they're actually designed to be more actual landscape amenities in addition to providing some storm water. These over here, by the way, are only taking, you know, some overland flow from the, you know, site, but also from clean rooftop runoff. The parking areas down here will be going through pre-treatment with a four bay and a treatment unit to go into that basin. So, but those are not the ones going to the isolated wetland.
So your roof runoff, I know that this was supposed, is to be designed or the purpose of it may be designed, then can you use your roof runoff as regular? In the building, can you use it as, is that the purpose of the design? Is that?
That can be a little tricky with the state.
Ask him his question.
But if you were, I'm not sure if you were here at the, I don't think you were here at the last hearing, but one thing that the school is considering and Flansburgh is considering for this project is to go through what's called the Living Building Challenge, if you're familiar with that.
I'm familiar with the challenge.
Yeah, so it's like lead on steroids. So the, but we're hoping to go in the direction of Living Building Challenge. And there's many different pedals, if you're familiar with it, one of which is the water pedal. And so there's a possibility that, you know, actually, if you go through that pedal, the water essentially has to be sourced at the building and then returned back at the building. So it's, but that creates some permitting hurdles, as I'm sure you're aware with the state. So, but we, but we're, we got to wait and see if we're going to go in that direction. But right now, for planning board approval, we show a connection of, to the municipal water system and a wastewater connection to the school's onsite treatment plant. That does not qualify for the water pedal, you know. So. Yeah, so one thing that, you know, there are some possibilities, again, if we go that route, that we might, you know, be using some of that clean rooftop runoff and using it for irrigation purposes or something. So it can be used for different things.
Right, so I didn't know how far this concept goes or what particular part of it, they talk about green roofs, capacity and things.
You know, I think we guys are getting it.
We're getting to 2P.
Wait, it's really expensive.
You want to have a discussion afterwards, you can do that.
Okay, thank you.
So we kind of commit to that just yet because of the cost, potential cost of doing it.
But I thank you for answering and I thank you for the questions. Are there any other questions from the audience that they'd like to put forward to the applicant at all?
I think just, I'm sorry, it's interesting. And again, we talked about this before, the docking. Can you explain, did you say there was an inlet or something that's going to be attached to the dock the last time? Is that how you were, is that how you're getting the water into the studying? Is that how that's?
There'll be a water intake at the dock structure that'll bring basically, you know, salt water from the Parker River.
To pump it?
To pump it, yeah. Up the hill to the building where it'll be used in the aquarium for the aquarium's, you know, critters.
And then when will the rest of the permitting will be done for the dock? And how you guys proceed with that as far as?
Probably later this summer.
I'm just concerned with, as we talked about.
Probably later this summer will be.
And really the concerns that we had at the last meeting was standing that, you know, being able to tell when people can have these stuff or go on all the time.
Yeah.
And not trying to. Not at all.
Great questions.
Questions.
Yeah, I think late summer for the.
Everyone could be part of that.
Yeah, we're really focusing on the building and getting management. The whole cycle process.
That's what made worry, you think, with everybody. And I think this, that's what.
Yeah.
Okay. Martha and I were just chatting about procedures of going from here. And I think that we need to keep the public hearing open because there have been a lot of things that we've discussed that are not really finalized. But I also think that maybe it might make sense to direct Martha to prepare a decision that incorporates so many of the things that are in Joe's letter that are going to be conditioned and other things that we want to have done and maybe have that ready at our next meeting. And then we can come back and chat with you guys and close it at that period of time. Does that make sense to you?
Yes. It won't be a final decision by any means.
No, no, this is a, this is a tune-up so that we can read it through and get a sense for, because there's just so many, there are, if you read Joe's letter and you read the fire chief's, some of the questions have been raised here. Incorporating these things into a final decision, which says, here are the things that we want to have. Here are the criteria that we have for various things and here are the conditions. And we don't really, we need to have them laid out in front of us first before we do that.
And the board will need to go for the special permit.
Right, decision criteria. So with that, I have a motion kind of to that effect.
I move that the town planner prepare a template decision in consideration for the board and for forming a basis for developing a climate decision as we proceed with information.
Ten seconds. Second, any comment, anybody? And okay, all those in favor, aye. Okay, we're done. So we'll see, to continue to, I don't want to have another one like this where we're two. So. 18? Not for me?
Not me on the 15th.
Ken?
Let me get there. I think it's okay.
You guys?
August 15th.
I'm okay.
I'm okay. So what's Georgia?
I'm not okay on the 15th.
Yeah, he's not okay. He's already missed one. Oh, no, I'm sorry, not this one.
No. All right, he's okay.
He's okay.
All right, so we'll do it on August 15th and we'll have a preliminary decision that we will have. And we can share it with you guys, I mean, just so you can see what it's saying. And we'll try to close it, the hearing at that meeting. Is that all right with you guys?
Seven oh five, is that?
Seven fifteen. Yeah, so we need a proposal on the time and the date.
Second would be enough time for you to get everything together. And now, Marcus.
Honestly, I think from a site standpoint, I'm not sure what else we are going to be submitting at this point. I think you're.
Yeah, I think so too. I think you're right.
I think the board is looking for maybe some, some samples of potential building materials.
That'd be nice.
Is there anything else that you're looking for from us?
I don't think so. Martha, what?
No, I don't think so. The only thought, but it's probably maybe too late, would be to circle back the Conservation Commission to see if they have any comments about some of the changes that have been made.
When can we, I can contact the chair. Okay, let's set the, let's set the days and times.
Want to continue now?
Yeah.
Okay, I move to continue the public hearing in this matter to August 15th, 2018, at 7:15 PM.
Second please. All those in favor? Okay, we're done, guys. Thank you very much. Thank you for, and thank you for all your patience on moving forward with the golf center.
All right, before we open our public hearing, there's one piece of business, the approval of the fiscal year 2018 year-end transfers.
And it is subject to chief, it's just chief.
I appreciate you hearing me before the hearing. It just should take like two minutes. I'm just requesting transfers from the police expense account into the police salary and wages account, $5,000, and from the emergency management expense account into the police salary and wages for $3,376.24. That covers overages, but unanticipated overtime for storm response. Had about $10,000 worth of that this year. We usually plan out overtime for storm response. This was a bad year. So we went about 10,000, about 8,000 over our budget on that. So that's a request I'm making. And then there's another $400 from the retirement assessment into the shellfish council expense account. There was unanticipated repairs to his vehicle that we didn't see coming and it went over by about $390. And proposals and requests, and I appreciate your consideration.
Motion.
Someone?
Second.
Discussion?
I think you were making a motion.
Talk to Tracy.
Yes, talk to Tracy. The finance committee approved it last night and it has to be put forward.
So is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
So now I want to continue the public hearing from 6/2018 and set the parameters of the hearing. In consideration of the applications submitted by Eric Sorensen, President of Newbury Golf Center, Inc., for modification of special permit for the Newbury Golf Center 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road, assessors map R 43, lots 2, 11, and 4B, require a supermajority for out of five votes of the selectmen. JR is currently unavailable and will be using the M, what is it?
Mullin.
Mullin rule to come back on for the next public hearing.
Just going to ask that exact question.
Right, and as a note on that also, George missed the last one. I think he submitted his certification if we actually watched it live last time.
So.
So, um, I think that we, we've seen the various correspondence between you and Martha and Martha and our attorney. We've asked you to come this evening instead of putting off, uh, something until August, primarily just to hear from you, all of you. Uh, where you are in the process, um, get us a status report of where you are. Um, a schedule of your site work that's been approved and when you expect to have that done. And then, um, you know, we've said quite a bit all along about whether and when you would be bringing professional management services to this project. We'd like to know about that, and then finally, a landscape plan that we understand cannot be finalized until some of the, uh, work has been done on the site. But certainly a good faith effort to kind of show where you're headed on the critical areas of, of, of butter concerns. So those four things, and just, just.
Does my board have anything they want to hear specifically tonight?
Jim?
Okay, I'll start, so first, thank you, uh, kind of update everybody, a couple of weeks ago, obviously, we had the meeting, next day we went full force to try to get the contractors, everybody lined up, height of the season, ran into a little bit of, everybody was busy to try to pull them off. We did bring the hammer in, unfortunately ran into some issues with the hammer, uh, it is fixed, we are going to go, uh, Monday and start that again. Stumps are still there, we have them ready, we're working like crazy to try to get the, that situation taken care of, but again, everybody is busy, hopefully next week we will, we'll have that taken care of. The big thing with the site is the ledge, that's the great unknown, to get these grades, you know, there's a lot of ledge out there, as many of you or everybody here did come out and see that, so. You know, the stumps will get taken care of, not a problem, the ledge is, you know, when it's gonna, you know, we're gonna start Monday hammering it, we got the hammer fixed, and that, you know, to tell you it's gonna be done a week or three weeks, we don't know, but we're really getting into it, how hard it is. You know, there is a couple prompts that need to take, be taken care of, uh, so that's where we stand with everything with, with what's gone on the last two weeks. A couple of things that we want to address, uh, first of all, site supervision, we do have, uh, a, a company that's been in business fifty plus years that is supervising, uh, the gentleman that's supervising has been over thirty years supervising.
Who's that?
Uh, John Thomas.
From?
He is, they are out of Vermont, they do have a Massachusetts license, uh, we do have two Massachussets.
Is he living in Vermont or is he living?
He's living down near for the job, so why, and the question, why'd you bring him down, he's done golf course stuff before, so we're ready with the golf industry, obviously you want a guy who's done golf stuff before, that's why. I've worked with him before in Vermont, seen his work, and I thought he'd bring him down.
And what is the company name?
Uh, John Thomas is, is the name, that's.
The name of the company.
John, John Thomas Excavation, if you go onto Google.
So he's your site contractor?
He, he is, yeah, and he's supervising with his guys, he's the supervisor, he has his staff.
So just, when you go on the website, there are three John Thomases, John Thomas Senior, who founded the company fifty years ago, John Thomas Junior, who has been working at the company for thirty years, and John Thomas the Third, who was a youngster. It is John Thomas, the middle one, who's in his fifties and has been doing this for fifty years, but just so that when you go on, you don't come back and, there are, there are, there are three John Thomases, so it is the middle of, it is the middle of the three.
If you need anything from him, we've obviously presented it to him, um, so he's, he's there full time now on the site. Second thing I want to address is obviously the dust, it's been dry, we do have a watering truck, okay, so we will be watering the site and taking care of that as it's kicked, kicked up this week. I know that's an issue, but we want to, want to address that, um, as we're going forward. Third thing I want to address, and I imagine, and you got that letter today with the road, um, you know, we monitor the road every day. Doug's been out there to see the road and see that what we have in place, um, the only thing, I did speak to Doug today, the only thing he asked is if I could push the, the crushed stone at the edge back twenty feet, and I did do that. So, uh, you know, to look at the road, and I know many of you have gone by, it's pretty clean, uh, but we do monitor that every day, obviously we had a mud issue before, now it's a dust issue, so we will be watering and monitoring that every day. So those are kind of the things where we are right now with everything, uh, going forward, if I can.
So on the street, I know there was something in the letter today, an issue of whether or not it would have any harm to the street, so the street is a binder course, it is not a tuck code, it's not finished, it's an unfinished, or it's, you know, it's mid-construction. Uh, but again, you know, Eric's taking pictures as he's doing it, he took more pictures today, uh, you know, he happened to mention that a couple people from the boards have driven by and actually stopped and waved and, you know, he's monitored and checked with Doug on a regular basis. So while I understand that a letter came in, uh, I do think since the last hearing in the last two weeks, uh, he's been in regular contact. And he's out there every single day, every morning, and ended the day, every day sleeping, so we've been talking about that on a regular basis. So you touched on, give me a little more detail on the timing, so.
So time, yeah, I mean, timing, we get the ledge down, he's gonna strip and get the grades, that's when obviously we want the boards to come out, you ask about the balloons, get the balloons up there, um, you know, in ideal world, we'd love to do that, you know, if everything works out the first week of, um, August, in a perfect world, with the ledge. You know, if everything works out where we can get the balloons and have you out for the sidewalk, um, from there, obviously, he, he has his grades down, he starts to get the path, get the buildings up, and goes with, you know, finishes the driveway in a short game area, probably last.
So the driveway is being built right now?
No, no, when we get the grade, when we get the grades, he's gonna get the grades, there's, there's potentially ledge underneath the driveway, he's gotta get those cuts in there, let's see if there's ledge while we get the hammer. So we don't know because of seventeen foot cuts in that driveway, so you really don't know until you get down in there.
So I think if you remember when we moved the driveway from the left edge to the now, there was a discussion about the fact that there would be somewhere between a twelve and a seventeen foot cut to get it done, so. On, on getting everybody back in August as well, you know, optimist pessimist, um, we'd like to get everybody out there as soon as possible. I want to make sure that we do the timing right with everybody, so my suggestion, Eric, for this evening is to find out when you would possibly do a joint meeting in August. And my suggestion was to schedule the sidewalk the Saturday before, so that it gives the most amount of time to get as much work done as possible. And has that sidewalk as close to but before the date you would do a joint meeting, so that it's most beneficial for everybody. Rather than being an optimist and saying, can we do it on Saturday, August fourth, and get everybody out there and find out that we're only two thirds of the way done, and you gotta come back in a couple of weeks. Don't want to be considerate of everybody's time and schedule, um, but also know the, the importance of getting seed down in August, if at all possible.
Yeah, uh, well, I guess my, as you said, Mr. Rosen, the concern that I have is doing a, a sidewalk partway through, you know, if you run into tons of ledge. And we get out there, August fourth, August eleventh, August eighteenth, whatever it is, you may not be at a point where there's anything for us to see. So I don't know that scheduling a sidewalk until you've at least finished your hammering makes sense. Just because until that's done, it's, it's really possible, you can, once you've done your hammering, you can have a pretty good sense of how quickly you can move the earth around, but till the hammering's finished, I don't know that that's.
My, my only thinking is because you're, you're doing joint meetings and not individual meetings, uh, if we scheduled that, we can always let Martha know the hammering was not as quickly. And we can cancel the site visit, but still do the joint meeting, whereas if we wait to do the joint meeting, talk about what kind of shape it's in, and then schedule a site visit after that.
The main hammering area is, is where the buildings are going, so that's where we're hitting right now on, on Monday. That's the area we're gonna concentrate on, that's where you want to get the grades, because that's from the neighbors' view, that's where you want to address. You want to see the balloon floating up from the building area, you know, out, out in the landing area, way out there where there's, you know, where we talked about leaving some oak crops and stuff like that, we're not ready to come back even with a proposal for that yet, but that would be the last thing we, we would do. Or the driveway would be the last thing to get the, you know, and that's not gonna change our view, you know, down below seventeen foot cut. It's more, I think that's where you're interested in, if I'm wrong, tell me, but I think that's where you're interested in, that whole area.
I think both the, I mean, certainly where the buildings go is a major concern, but, uh, one of the neighbors is certainly concerned about her site, uh, as far as the driveway is concerned, because it has moved much closer to her house, so not having that graded before the sidewalk, I think is also a potential issue. Because we, you know, hopefully, as you said, doing the cuts takes it out of view. But I think to be an honest arbiter of what's going on and what's changed for these people, it has to, the change has to occur.
Can I speak, I'm also concerned about the other butter on the other side, so I don't want to leave that site, that site, not, um, that side of the site untouched.
Laura, can we back in?
Because she is potential for a view on her side as well.
So we're gonna get the grades back there, it's not, you know, hammering wise, there's a little bit over there, but yeah, I agree.
Well, let me ask you, in three weeks, what do you think you will have done?
You're gonna have a guy full time on the hammer, all day.
And so if we went out in three weeks, we would see what?
I think you would see the majority of ledge, if not all of it, if it, if it starts to go, gone, I would think you would see the site graded.
All the, the whole site?
At least the landing area, because that's our concentration, but we need to get that seed down.
What about the area abutting, the, the two, oh, let's call it the three abutters now, the Buckley's, the, or the Rogers, Buckley's, Lauren, and, uh, your, I don't know, something.
The Carbone.
Carbone.
The one's right back there.
Well, I think his goal is to get the grades, I mean, I think if the ledge comes down, he's gonna get the grade of the whole site, because it needs to be stayed by the, the.
I mean, I think that, I'd feel more comfortable if that work was done, instead of going out half and seeing half worked on, so.
John and Damon, I think the fact of at least scheduling a meeting, a potential of sidewalk, and not getting too caught up in maybe in the three weeks or whatever span, and you're gonna let us know.
Yeah, I'm gonna let you know if it's not.
Informational meeting or if we're gonna have a sidewalk.
Absolutely.
I mean, the truth of the matter is, you know, and he's not here, so I'll speak for him, uh, J R drives by six times a day, his, his, his facility is, you know, a hundred yards down the road across the street. If it's not close to being ready by the time we're doing the sidewalk, everybody's gonna know, because he's gonna say, why are we doing a sidewalk on Saturday, they're not even close. And I, I agree, uh, but I, but I do think, to your point, if we don't at least get it on the calendar, then we're not gonna have, you know, now you're talking about maybe getting it on the calendar in September after you have an August meeting.
Well, let's do this.
It's a lot easier to cancel than it is to create one.
Exactly.
The two chairs, let's do this, if we decide on a meeting, and then the sidewalk, if we need one, if they're ready, could be before, and if it isn't, you're gonna have an informational meeting anyway.
I could keep Martha updated, she corresponds with everybody.
And you gotta remember, don't tell us, everyone's busy, don't tell us like over three days before.
No, I will keep her, keep you updated, so.
And did you guys have a specific day in mind?
We did, was it?
I mean, originally I had suggested the first Saturday in August, the fourth, but the truth of the matter is, I think what's more relevant is when the boards can do a joint meeting, because I know it's August, I know everyone has schedules. I think if the board's determined that you were gonna do it like on a planning night or a selectman night, depending what day that is, my suggestion would be the Saturday immediately before it. Because that gives you the most likely chance that you will see the most amount of work.
Are you guys, uh, are you guys meeting in August?
Yes.
But towards the end of first. Twenty first.
Twenty first. And we're meeting right now, I think.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was closer to the end.
And so we're meeting the first and the fifteenth.
So if you were doing a joint meeting on the fifteenth, then I would suggest Saturday, the eleventh, if you could do a joint meeting on the fifteenth.
Now let's go back over, what do we have?
Because it's not happening on August first, that's.
We have, so we have same situation, it should be, it shouldn't be, well, and that's at seven fifteen.
We have a little something scheduled for.
Yeah. So, she's, I mean, we, we, we can do the, we can do the fifteenth and then do the sidewalk on the eleventh. Uh, wait a minute, how about you guys, I've got you.
George. Fifteenth, so if you're with me.
So George will.
What about the eleventh, for a sidewalk?
George wants to, if we do it on the fifteenth, so it'll be out of, yeah.
Out of the hearings.
Oh, for, for this.
I'll be on it, you're right. You gotta do another date.
Yeah, I mean, I think we do.
Can we do it during the week, is that feasible?
Sidewalk?
Yeah.
Well, we could do, are you gone that whole week, George?
No.
Just a.
I'm in a grocery.
Just, oh, I can't.
Yeah, and it's not, I'm not getting in trouble.
I knew you could have remembered it.
Well, we've already said, you know, we, we could do a different.
It's not guaranteed, I mentioned it, uh.
We could do the fourteenth on our normal meeting day and just hold a special meeting.
And you could do that, George, you could do the fourteenth, I can do the fourteenth. Or, uh, can we move our planning board meeting to the fourteenth now that we've set it?
Yeah, because it's a public hearing.
I mean, you could. You need two weeks, right?
I mean, you could have, catch it back to that, if they do the fourteenth, then.
We do the. That's what I was saying. Do the fourteenth, can't we move governors to the fourteenth?
Because that's been, I'm a sector, time dates are.
Can't we reset it? How old am I, a journey?
That was the notice to the public and the public that were concerned have left over.
No, John, and no, no, John.
Well, I'm just trying to get out of two meetings in a row in August, uh, but anyway, sure, if we have to do it, we'll do it.
And realistically, do you think it'll be ready?
Right, it gives you a month.
It gives you a full month, which I think is, was my concern, was the fourth was gonna be cutting it close, I think the extra week is, is, you're gonna need every day of it, Eric.
Right, and a sidewalk on the eleventh.
We will let Martha know by the fourth if it's not looking good, so that we give everybody at least a week's notice.
Okay, okay.
Seven P M.
Seven, whatever.
Yeah, we can do seven, seven fifteen in case we have some business, but we're, I think we'll, we'll get to that at the end of the meeting, we'll set those dates. So the other thing that we'd ask for was a revised landscaping plan, I'm assuming, seeing the large boards that that does not exist yet.
We, well, we were. The big thing is we're waiting to get the grades, get the grades, I mean, we gave you, we, we presented a plan last time, but it's gonna change, we want, you know, the carbone needs to come out and walk it with you, talk about it on that sidewalk date, and we'll come back with something, you know, because if we have the grades, we have the balloons, we're gonna know exactly where we can put those.
Can I, can I make a suggestion, well, if it's ready for them, get Anna up here and have Anna go do a walk with them, you don't need everybody to do that, if that's.
You're gonna have to, because we're not available on the eleventh, so we're not gonna do that.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, if you, yeah. I'll get Anna here and.
Sorry, they said that they would get.
As soon as it is even remotely ready for them, we will get Anna up here, whether it's on a weekday, uh, uh, whatever is convenient for their schedule, so that they have a chance to see it. And, and now, the whole point was, we had promised them that we would walk it with them before we designed that.
Okay. So do it, so do it before our meeting on the fifteenth.
Before, no, we're gonna do it before your sidewalk on the eleventh, hopefully, that way when we come out there on the eleventh.
We can have a plan, we can look at.
Or at a, at a minimum, we'll have a mini plan that's marked based on our sidewalk with them.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure, whose responsibility are the balloons?
I guess Meridian.
So have the balloons ready.
Yeah, at, at each corner of the building, at the relative height of the building.
Highest, highest point of the building.
Of the building, and to the extent we can get one out to the back block line, or two tethered to where the light posts would be.
Light post. We would like to see the, you know, selective, you know, I mean, there's a lot, there's five on, on the southern part and a little more on, on, so selectively, maybe three and, yeah, you know what I mean?
Yeah, pick the highest ones anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Or the ones most likely to be visually disturbing.
Yeah. So that would go a long way, and what about on the handling of the property? Um, well, I don't know if you're gonna meet with her or not, but I, it'd be wise if you did. You know?
Yeah, I think, as Alicia said, having that berm at the end of the property, so that we can walk down to the handling, see what it looks like, see if any mitigation needs to happen there.
As we discuss some potential planting behind the berm at.
Yes.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Everything will be stayed.
Yeah, I don't, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, I have that, this new excavation, this guy you have, John Thomas,
Mm-hmm.
you said he's staying down here, does he have a staff with him, or is he all?
No, he has a staff.
How many is it, how many in there?
Depends on what's going on, at least there's three of them, maybe four.
Okay.
It could be five, just depends on what, where we are, what phase.
Okay, and then, um.
Plus he has subcontractors coming in on top of his staff.
Okay, so he's, he's getting subs?
He's getting subs.
All right. Um, I don't know if this is a question for the board, do you know when Scotland, or maybe Matthew might know, when Scotland Road is scheduled to have its top coat put on it?
We can ask James, but.
They started tearing up the tar today.
Yeah, they started moving stuff today.
Just so you know, the spot right before ninety-five and then the other spot down, uh, past JR's farm. It looks like they're prepping to do the top coat.
Two weeks before the top coat.
So, it'll be done by the time we're out there again.
So, can you make sure that, that the dirt and stuff doesn't ruin that road, please?
Yes, can I, can I ask a question? To do it now, to be preemptive, okay? They're gonna be out there on a particular day, laying top coat, it's at its most vulnerable the day they're doing it.
They're doing it at night.
They do do it at night, okay. So can we find out, is there somebody, because I think if, even if they do it at night, I would say that next morning, you don't wanna be driving on it.
Right.
Okay, so, like, I would hate for you to show up one morning, and have you guys show up one morning at nine in the morning, not realize that they had done it at eleven o'clock the night before and pull in, and we're gonna be back here. I, I'd rather, so who, who can we talk to?
Highway Sevilla, James Sorensen.
Okay.
Okay, so, so reach out to James, and, you know, potentially on that day, as long as he can give you a couple days' notice, don't work the next day, take a day off.
Schedule your.
I just won't have the trucks come in, I can tell the guys.
Yeah, well, the trucks are there, make sure the trucks are there the night before.
Yeah, we just won't, we won't be trucking things in and out of.
Yeah, I would have it like a no-truck day, I'd put yellow tape across the driveway, and I would have no trucks, no vehicle traffic in or out for twenty-four hours, to the time they pave in front of your property.
That's great.
One file's enough, Chuck?
They're gonna have trucks from Newbury Ford going up and down that road right afterwards, so.
There's maybe trucks, there's trucks all down the road.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
Pretty hot.
Yeah, but they're not trucking dirt in that site.
Right, right, yep.
All right, uh, it looks like the sixteenth.
This is, this is exactly what I'm asking them, yeah.
I got a bullseye.
A little bird just told me that on the sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth are the, the scheduled dates for doing the top coat over there.
Okay, thank you.
You may be able to get a more specific date for right in front of your location.
Okay.
Because I think one of the hardest things for, for the top coat is if you're actually turning on it, as opposed to driving straight on it.
Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, July, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, August.
July.
July.
Okay.
So it's coming right up this week.
It's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
It's Monday, which is the day you're gonna show up. Yeah, you gotta, because if you're gonna be pulling trucks and that, I'm glad I asked the question, okay? You need, you need to truck.
Find out from James where they're gonna be.
Right.
Yep.
I'll follow.
Yeah, so coordinate would be very difficult. Thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah, I don't wanna, you're debating it after the.
And I just want you to clarify that outpopping, that who you had mentioned, you pointed it to on the other side, not where you're gonna put the housing. You're still gonna, I know you're talking about hammering, you're still gonna try to work with the land as much as you can and use those outpoppings, correct?
Yeah, we're gonna try, I mean, it's, we're gonna work with the civil engineers, and we're gonna make them work with the plan. You know, I wanna leave as much as possible on there, but it still has to work, and I think we gotta present a plan to you. You know, so it's, we're just gonna figure out exactly what we're requesting with those. I wanna hammer it as little as possible.
But that also changes the stormwater.
I was just gonna say, provided that it doesn't require the following of a brainstorm water management plan that potentially could hold the project up for another six to eight weeks.
Right.
Because then you're gonna have to deal with winter conditions.
Right.
So at the, at the end of the day, there may be some trade-off in that there will be more chipping than you would prefer to do, but it's better than having the site unseated in October. Okay, you got, you got that, right? Okay.
You, you're scheduling, you're thinking that on Monday is when the, you're gonna start grinding those stuff?
Monday. Mon- Monday was when they were starting to come in and he was trying to get everybody getting it go, but if it's obviously paving, we will have to hold off a day. So I, I hope to call James and find out.
Hopefully, I mean, look, you're in the middle of where they're doing it, so they're either starting up one end or the other, and they're doing it for three days.
Yeah.
You're just in the middle of the other end, okay?
And, and, and get them in there on Monday and tell them any trucks that gotta come on site. They've all gotta come in the first day, and they all have to know in advance that they're staying there for at least three days.
Right.
They're not taking trucks off.
Right, so I'll call them and find out. And then we'll monitor, obviously, after that closely.
So.
Um, do you wanna read stuff in?
Do we have, do we have?
We have at least one letter.
Why don't have one?
We have, uh.
Seven times a sidewalk?
That's, he's gonna, he's gonna read the letters, and he has to open to the public, there's one.
Yeah.
All right, this is a letter from Sam Jocelyn to Newbury Golf Center Registered Agent Eric Sorensen for two, Circle, April Mass, zero one eight three zero, regarding one thirty-one, one fifty-one Scotland Road. Dear Mr. Sorensen, pursuant to the Board of Selectmen's vote on June twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, the cease and desist issued on April fourth, twenty eighteen is hereby partially lifted with the following conditions. You may pull and grind stumps outside the wetland as per the mitigation plan. You may grade the site and you may stabilize the soils. Please note, no additional work may take place without prior written approval. Should you have any questions, my office hours are Monday and Wednesday, eight AM to twelve, and Tuesday, five to seven. Or you may phone me at nine seven eight, four six five, zero eight six two, extension three oh nine, respectfully, Sam Jocelyn, Newbury's Building Commissioner. To whom it may concern, while not a resident of Newbury, I travel Scotland Road every day on my way to work. The condition of Scotland Road as a result of the construction of the anticipated golf course is a disappointment. As a real estate and construction professional, I do not understand why wheel washing is not being done regularly and erosion control is not better monitored. If this continues, it will most assuredly impact the new paving on Scotland Road. I understand that the developer contractor has not adhered to conditions imposed by the town of Newbury regarding landscape buffers and protection of neighboring properties as well as general site condition. It is important for the town of Newbury to engage in a significant oversight on, of the ongoing work through completion in order to avoid any further negative impact on abutters and those who travel regularly on Scotland Road. Your attention is greatly appreciated, respectfully submitted, Patricia P. for seventeen B Fair Street, Newbury Port, Mass. So those are the, um, things to be read in on this project. What else? Thank you. Okay. You guys, wanna say anything back there?
Yeah, you know. I'm going with the.
Jessica Carbone, one twenty-one, Scotland Road, um, so the dust that Eric referenced, yes, or talked about, um, it was an incident that happened yesterday, there was an extreme dust cloud that came through our backyard. Um, Devon and I were standing in her kitchen, talking as we saw it happen, so we went outside and talked to Eric about it. I know that dust control was talked about in multiple public hearings that we had. Um, it was also brought up on the sidewalk that we did, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, so, and, uh, now, so the board knows, uh, George Carbone has returned home, um, and cannot go outside while any construction work is happening, period, at all. Um, and if he could, he has to go out with a mask, but with dust like that, you definitely can't, we can't open windows, we can't do anything like that. Um, so I was concerned about the dust, I was also concerned about the condition of Scotland Road, because even though it's gotten better, it, it really hasn't all that much, so I did my own research last night and found some of the conditions or guidelines from the Conservation Commission for the Town of Newbury, reference the Massachusetts Erosion and Sediment Control Guidelines for urban and suburban areas that was published by the Mass VEP. Talks about the rocks that need to be put on the driveway, a wash station for the tires, dust control, erosion control, all of those types of things. So I think it would be good if we kind of can force Eric to follow those guidelines, um, because clearly it's not happening, the rocks have settled in the driveway, it's more dirt there than it is rocks. When we, when we initially built the road, it was nice big boulders that were catching more of that sediment, but it's, it's really not happening now. And I'm just wondering if it needs to be a tire wash station there, especially if we're gonna be paving the road, that's expensive, and it would be nice to keep it nicely paved for everybody, for as long as we could, but I just wanted to clarify where the dust comment came from.
Appreciate it, appreciate it, thank you.
And I think I'm a little disappointed, because I did mention the, um, the water tank to Michael the day that we did the sidewalk. And when I spoke to Eric yesterday, he said he didn't know anything about it, so it's like the right hand is, you know, with the left hand is doing in this construction business, everybody's blaming everybody else, and this is not happening, that's happening, and it's very frustrating on the other side of it. Um, sorry, Scotland Road with the dirt, I have to travel to accident button on my driveway, I've lived next door to the county here for thirty-eight years. Um, I know something could have been buried there, you know, and all fairness to us, if I'm driving Scotland Road with all of the dirt and whatnot, it's coming up to my driveway, so I have to drive it and come up, so those are two huge concerns for us to deal with. I just want this over and done with, this is, it's just long and ridiculous, and I just, I'm just frustrated with the whole thing.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So who is in charge in making sure that the, is this the Conservation Commission, I'm gonna ask you. Who is in, who is supposed to ensure that these, um, conditions are being met, because obviously they are?
Well, before I answer that question, I, I just wanted to make a, a point that leads into the answer to your question. The point is, you're sort of caught between two worlds here, from what I'm gathering. You, you had a, um, a site plan approved, we had a special program approved, there were conditions that, now there's a cease and desist order that stopped everything, you've granted certain relief for that cease and desist order, but the relief wasn't subject to any conditions, terms, monitoring, anything else, so what we're, where we're at right now, uh, unfortunately, is between rock and a hard place, pardon the pun, because you need to live the cease and desist, I understand partially, in order to get to the point where you can get your vegetation plan and create your elevation stunt. So you don't wanna, with the cease and desist, if no activity occurs, you need that activity to occur. But at the same time, you don't have the monitoring controls that you normally would when you have a fully permitted project that's being reviewed by your building department. There's also a wetland side to this, you have, um, you know, your conservation agent looking into those things. Certain things would be outside of the concom jurisdiction, certain things would be within it. The rest of it would be within the building department, provided there's an actual enforceable condition that requires, you know, the typical conditions of any, you know, site development, erosion, sedimentation control, all the things like that. Those, you know, conditions in an enforceable form, we're sort of talking about them, but you don't have them in a, in a condition of the relief you granted. Uh, it was on the twenty-sixth, Jill asked me after the site visit, when this board of boards together took a vote to issue that parcel release. So one of the questions I had is, you know, you have, um, excuse me, John Thomas, and you identified him as kind of the supervisor, so, uh, what I'm gathering is you're, you're sort of putting him out as kind of a site monitor. But I didn't hear a phone number, contact information, or any reporting requirement. So those are the places where you might be able to find some of those, um, communication, um, uh, areas where you can find out what works going on in any particular day, who's showing up, what was accomplished that day, what was done to minimize dust. I mean, there are obviously controls, I mean, you've mentioned them, uh, that can be put in place. He can monitor those and tell you if it was necessary, what was done, when it was done, how much it was done. Uh, the same thing with respect to, uh, commercial vehicles going to and from the site, if they're already there, and you're just talking about, you know, subcontractors, contractors coming out, and personal vehicles to access them, maybe not such a big deal, but on the days when big, you know, vehicles that are gonna drag the sediment, you know, off the site and potentially under the road, what's being done to, you know, monitor that traffic? So I, I'm guessing from what you said, that this is the person that will answer those questions. So we need a line of communication, I, I think that would benefit, uh, the board's ability to, um, be in the loop and know what's happening. And if not the board, uh, designate a board that can report to the board, so that we have the answer to those questions on a real-time basis. Because as you mentioned, we don't wanna find out two weeks from now, you don't, you don't wanna be here two weeks after something was wrong. We want it in real time, the board will want it, I assume, in real time, so they can be responsible on the job. And you could even go so far, and, um, I'm just throwing this out for the sake of discussion. Um, you took a vote to grant certain relief from the cease and desist order. You could have granted it, subject to certain limitations, conditions, oversight, so that's still a possibility. Um, I know from where we're at and what I heard this evening, you know, you're working towards sort of a common goal in order to get something accomplished during this season, while the opportunity is in front of you. Um, we're getting deeper into that calendar, uh, I'm mindful of the fact that this started in April. Your first hearing was June twenty, and then June twenty-sixth, and now July eleventh, tonight, so you wanna keep that moving, so you don't miss that opportunity there. I'm mindful of that. Um, but there are opportunities, you know, here tonight, or certainly at your next meeting, when you can have that interaction with them and find out what kind of conditions you would wanna see to make sure that you have, uh, those written explicit tools at your availability. So when you call your building commissioner, when you call your conservation agent, you can say, you know, we stipulated that, we would do our partial release and allow grinding, um, soil organization, I think was the other one, and, and grading, but subject to certain conditions to make sure the site isn't a nuisance in the meantime, while that's happening. Because we don't have the typical oversight that we would if we're enforcing our, our.
Brad, isn't Mass General Law subject to some of those things, the erosion control? And I mean, Mass General Law has certain regulations about putting spoilage on highways, and that's, uh, you know, so I mean.
Right, there's, there's sort of a baseline.
You can't break the law.
No, of course not, I'm not suggesting that there isn't anything out there, but most of those standards have triggers. Um, so the, the easiest way to make it, simplest way is just to make it explicit and require it as a condition of the relief you've granted provisionally. Then you have it right in front of you.
Okay.
It, it's, maybe they're out there, maybe they're not, but why have an argument about whether or not it's triggered due to certain acreage of clearings, part of footage of clearings, certain activities, whether or not those are triggered, whether or not it's in conservation's jurisdiction, planning's jurisdiction, uh, zoning jurisdiction, et cetera, you can make it explicit. So I throw that out, maybe, maybe you're not there yet for tonight, um, had a good interaction, a good dialogue with them tonight, but, uh, I, I recommend you consider it as things go forward, because if things aren't working out, holding another meeting is your only chance to, to, to bring it back. And then, if you don't have those conditions in place, you're gonna be asking for them then, better to ask before you need them.
Now, why does our partial lifting of the cease and desist, they still are operating under the initial permit? So it seems like all the conditions that we applied in that permit are still applicable within the partial lifting of the cease and desist. I don't understand how we've gotten, my understanding last meeting was that we were lifting, they were still working under a permit that we had granted, and we were only letting them do part of the work, but all of the rest of the permit conditions were still there, so why isn't that the case?
And that permit hasn't gone away, that's the permit of record, but what got us here is because that permit wasn't complied with. So we're not operating, what's happening now is not pursuant, this mitigation plan that you're seeking, ultimately, we're planning to have a final, approvable, uh, mitigation plan, is not pursuant to what's the plan of record right now, something new. So yes, that hasn't gone away, that's the baseline, and you can insist that that's the plan of record for the project in the bigger picture. But in the, the sort of more microcosm view that we have right now, of this mitigation application that's before the board, um, you don't have to go back to that baseline permit, you can, you can add on.
Add more to it.
So my concern is the baseline permit. So my concern is the baseline permit applies to a project prior to the cutting that was an additional mess that was made there. So the conditions that I'm speaking to and I think that you're speaking to were arisen from the land that was cut that should not have been cut and the damage that was done to the, to the site. And because if it was, if quite frankly, Eric, if you had done, whoever you hired had done the project correctly, we wouldn't be talking about dust flying through the neighborhood. And I don't believe we had adequate oversight. I want to get a number, whoever this person is, I want somebody, and I hate to say it now, but pardon me. Or Sam.
Really, Sam?
Daily, daily, I want daily phone call. What's going to happen today? I'd like to know when the, when the, the, I know those trucks are supposed to be hosed up onto the, the road. Is there water there?
Let me just start over.
No, I got it.
Okay, so I, I just, you need better oversight.
So, yeah, just to correct a few things, okay? What was planned to be cut was more than 15 acres of trees. What was cut was less than 16 acres of trees. So the amount of additional dust and debris in comparison to was actually planned to be cut. This is the project. Yes, the tree cutter went beyond the scope of work, but the dust isn't because the tree cutter went beyond the scope of work. The dust is because this is, if I can finish, this is a clear cut of more than 15 acres of land to begin with. That's number one. Number two, we have been acting all along as though all of the terms and conditions continue to be applicable because we consider this part of the plan. Nothing has changed. Doug Pack for the conservation agent does come to the project. He does check on it. He does report back to Martha. He asks that we refresh the stone. We have refreshed the stone. He came out and he inspected the refreshed stone. He might not report back to every member of every board, but he does let Martha know. He does coordinate with Eric. He checks, he checks and makes sure we're sweeping the sweep. He checks on it every day or every couple of days. He makes sure that we are in fact complying with the requirements as he interprets them. So, you know, I just want to be clear on that. I also want to be clear, there are papers filed with the site supervisor and excavator's name, contact information and phone number. It's in the SWIPS. He's the person that filed the paperwork. He's on all of the paperwork. So this isn't some mystery individual that may or may not exist. He's here, he's a licensed individual to do this in Massachusetts and he's on the SWIPS, on the application, on all the paperwork filed with the town. So, you know, we own it and we've been saying this for the last two meetings. We're going to do everything we can to make this right. We own it. Doesn't matter that Eric didn't do it. It doesn't matter that third party did it. Not Eric. It's Eric's project and he owns it and we're doing everything we can to fix it and we're ready yet. But by the same token, there are conditions. We have been respecting those conditions. We did everything we said we would do two weeks ago when we came to the meeting. We went out to be refreshed and we are communicating with the town. The point of contact is Doug and Martha. And we, we are regularly in communication. This isn't, not talking to anybody ever about anything that's going on. It's about making sure that people know and we're doing what we're supposed to do, that Doug comes out there and looks. The truth of the matter is they really haven't done a lot in the last two weeks. It rained at the end of the week last week. There wasn't any dust. There was no work being done at the site. There was a, they dropped off some fill yesterday. By yesterday afternoon, the ground had dried out after a couple of days. He should have had somebody out watering it. As soon as they came out, he made phone calls, said, no more work. I got to get the water. People out of here, we got to get it resolved. This isn't like it's been two weeks of just complete disregard, dirt out on the sweep, rocks out on the sweep. He personally is supervising, we're doing the sweeping every morning, every evening on the site.
Now, hold up. If you say he, you mean Eric?
I mean Eric.
But he's out there with a push room. He's not out with a street sweeper. It's a big difference.
Hold for a second, hold for a second, just for a second.
We're in course.
What about John Thomas? Does John Thomas have, does John Thomas have a list of responsibilities that he is supposed to be doing on the site?
He knows what he has to, he has some, but I mean, we have a weekly SWIPS report. I mean, to say that the erosion control is issues, there's more than enough, we have double erosion control, we have two steel fences when you drive by. I mean, we're more than enough, damn, you're probably very close to erosion. I mean, we got more than enough so that to even say that comment, I don't want to be rude to anybody, but we're over erosion. These guys are on like, on our case to over protect the wetlands and every kind of thing. But John, John is, he's not a street sweeper, but we've been in touch with Doug and what we need and what we don't. I know, I know.
Does Doug, do we know if Doug knows John Thomas?
Doug's met John. Yeah, he's been on site. Doug, Doug was there this week. I talked to Doug today about that letter and what we need to address. The only thing he said was, you know, maybe push the loose stone back a little bit off the road. Everything else is fine.
I mean, it is a responsibility, not a respons, but it's inspectional services because they have the power to do this. And maybe some kind of direct conversation with, through Tracy to those two individuals maybe needs to happen. I don't know.
Yeah, it doesn't look right.
I just need to clarify what I said, okay? Because I meant what I said and I think I may have misspoke a little bit. The problem, the issues that are happening right now are a direct result of the overcutting. The amount of land or trees that you cleared, the amount of land that you had cleared would have happened exactly, correct. But because it wasn't done correctly, everything stopped and now we have additional problems. So yes, this is an issue, this is a direct result of what you did. And you forget the fact that you are in a residential neighborhood. That is of the utmost importance. If you had decided to site this spot on a Route One, we wouldn't even be here. You would be probably be having kids tee off, okay? But because you chose this, this is the way it has to go.
All right, excuse me, Deb, do you want to say something?
Yes, I just want to say something about that dust. Two weeks ago, I had mentioned it to the engineer and he said, oh, okay, we'll get a, a water truck out. It's as if they didn't even take that into consideration. Not that there's a huge dust bowl every day, I'm not saying that, but we did have, two weeks ago, total dust bowl in the backyard. Happened again yesterday and that's when I went over to my board and said, Eric, are you here? And he said, oh, I didn't know that, that you had spoken to him. It's like nobody knows what the other hand is doing. And that's the frustration part on my part. He says one thing, oh, I didn't know the trees were cut. They're blaming this guy, they're blaming that guy. Nobody's taking the full responsibility because everybody else is blaming everybody else.
So I have a question. Do you have a water truck on site? Do you have a water truck there that can hose things down?
We've hired, we've hired a water truck.
Is it on site?
No, we don't own the water truck. We have a company that's coming in to water.
So you, it's not rented and stays there to use it when they ever need it?
No, because we don't, we have a well, but in order to get water from the well, you got to put a generator. We're working on that. We have an open well. So in order to get that, it's a process to get water from that well. 600 feet down with the power.
Is it, maybe my question is to you, is it, is this, in my mind, and I could not know what I'm talking about, in my mind, they have a project, they need to have water there so that they can hose the trucks off so they don't come on up the road and they can hose, keep the soil down.
With huge piles.
In my mind, and I, I'm imagining a truck that you rent that parks on site and fills up with, with water, specific for these types of uses. Is that something that doesn't exist?
Those trucks exist. The question then is, I'm not, you know, I haven't spoken with your inspection officials. It sounds like there's been an interaction. They have to comply with these requirements.
Follow our SWIPS reports, everything we're allowed to do.
How they comply with it may be up to you. Maybe you run into a problem and you have to do it differently. But I would communicate with your inspection officials and find out why that hasn't happened, what the scheduling is, what the plan is, why there is a truck on site now. It's going to be six weeks to get the well and the generator going. That's a problem. What are you going to do about it in the meantime? So those are the questions.
We have a truck in the truck.
And if dust has been a problem this week, I'm not going to look backwards. I'm just throwing this out rhetorically. But if dust has been a problem, why was the truck here last time? So now we're looking forward. I'm not looking backward. I said that rhetorically.
Is this project?
But now if we communicate with these officials and they say, listen, dust is a problem today, a truck in two weeks from now is insufficient, they're going to tell you what they need you to do now.
We have a truck.
Exactly. No, this is exactly what I told you before the meeting, okay? So when we talked about it, we talked about we would have watering trucks so that when vehicles are out there, when construction is taking place, when they're out there doing work, and that's what we all talked about at the site walk, is that's what's going to cause the problem. So what happened yesterday? A vehicle came and dumped fill. There was no construction, there was no work going on. The reason that it got dusty yesterday is because it's been 95 degrees for the past four or five days. It wasn't related to construction at the site. It happened to be a weather-related condition. What we spoke about earlier today is we have to change the way we're looking at it, even though that's not what we talked about on the site walk, and we have to be watering whether we're doing work or not doing work, especially when we have a series of 95-degree days in a row. So we are paying, as you said, sometimes conditions change and you got to think as you're doing it. We get it, 100% we get it. But I also want to assure you, we didn't not do what we said we would do. We agreed, we will not do work, we will not have people out there without watering, without getting a vehicle out there. You don't just park a vehicle there, because if you park a vehicle there, it runs out of water. You call the water company, they come up with a truck, they do the watering, when they're done watering, they leave. We have talked about this. Eric and I had a discussion about this, you know, what did we say we would do? And my answer to him was, it doesn't matter what we said we would do. There was dust yesterday, it can't happen again. We got it.
In my opinion, a truck coming and dropping fill is work being done there.
You're driving up the technical.
And you didn't have a truck, and you didn't have water there.
Was there fill being placed on site? I'm sorry, I missed that.
We are, we have permission to bring in the fillers. We're trying to level the site and that's one of the things we're allowed to do is get it to great.
Fair enough.
I'm giving you a chance to clarify.
Fair enough. I think that John Thomas has got to be aware of these things on a daily basis and that, and that he, he has some people who are living next to his project that he's working on that are highly, highly susceptible to the dust.
Yeah, both Janine and George. I just want to clarify, I feel just as.
As one of us, he's got to make it a priority for himself until this is resolved, until you've got that site stabilized. That that's the most important thing for him. And then, and then your work, but to make sure that those things don't happen, okay?
Yeah, absolutely. And again, you know, we found out yesterday that George came home. We, we got it.
But that doesn't matter.
But that or even mad whether my husband's coming or not.
But, but we got it. This is important. We, we hear, we understand.
Okay, go ahead. All right, let's.
May I ask a question? When Doug and Sam and I were out on the site initially and Mike was there, we talked about the possibility of having Meridian representatives on the site on a more frequent basis as well as our, our engineer and, you know, several times a week. Has there been any further discussion of doing that?
Well, typically, right now, we're responsible for the SWIPS inspections, which can occur one of two ways. One, based on rainfall data, if you get a certain amount, more than a quarter of inch, you're doing inspection. That could lead to two weeks, i.e. with this kind of year, this time of year, that could lead to two weeks of rain going up there. So what we've done is we've put on a weekly basis going up and doing a SWIPS course. We don't typically do that kind of construction inspection monitoring that you're talking about. That's not really the function that we use, we do. But to address that, I favor was, we decided to do the weekly SWIPS inspections. There's not much more we can do without kind of very contradicting what our role is in the project.
Martha, does it make sense for us to have Joe go out and do some work?
Well, I think at this point, now that the site started again.
Now that I hear, excuse me, what's going on and really the uncertainty of people's responsibilities, that Joe could help us out and help them out quite a bit. Joe is our engineer for, he's been on this site, he's on all of various sites and he does all these reports for us. And so if we could give him a, a work program, then, then he'd be responsible to the town and report on abuses or good progress, whatever it may be.
Yeah, he can.
And he's on contract now, isn't he? Do we need anything new?
He is. I mean, I expect that the amount.
Might increase, but I, I, I favor that because he's a, he's a guy we're used to and we like his work and.
Like would the, our council that's advised us about having someone have this John Thomas' phone number and?
Oh, yeah.
Would that be, would that be Sam or, is Sam on your account?
It's on every weekly report.
Sam knows it.
I think Doug and Sam both have.
It's on every weekly report.
You know, it's going to have to be Eric and team. You're going to have to really sharpen up. I mean, theoretically, I don't know if you can control the dust of 15 acres on that whole long site. So certainly there's going to be areas that are going to affect the neighbors more than others. Those are the areas you're going to have to be very intuitive about and you're going to have to control the dust in those areas. If you have a construction, you're going to have to control the dust in those areas. Let's face it, it's an open dust bowl. Southeast wind is going to put it right up your hill. So you really got to try and hopefully the dust that comes from way down the site is going to lift and you're really going to have to control the dust that's next to the neighbors. You really got to start sharpening up at that site and live up to the things that you've put in place already. If dust is going to be a real issue because it's getting hot and you're getting those kind of winds now, maybe a Wesley is going to put it to the neighbors. You really got to have John Thomas be sharp and take care of the dust that's next to the neighbors.
Yep. So I don't think we need to vote on bringing Joe on board, do we? Because you could just do it. Well, he's on board, right. But we want, we want to increase his, his scope, especially during the next month, let's say, make sure it's all done right.
Okay, do we need to define his scope better for him?
Well, I would leave that up to Sam and Martha to define that because they, I think they know.
His role is not to discuss, it's just to report to us what he observes.
That's right.
And Sam will be enforced with that.
Yeah, Sam and Doug are both enforcing. And I think we can communicate with Sam and Doug that we're very concerned about the dust and the, and the road, which I think they already know. But that communication is also, just so you guys know, which is clear, that these things are of great importance both to us and to our set of others.
Excuse me, I, I have some serious concerns about the trucks that are showing up on Monday in Scotland Road. Is there anybody that can?
You mean our trucks, you mean the paving trucks?
Yes, the paving trucks and their trucks that they need to get going to get this project going. I know we asked Eric to coordinate with, with James. I, I need to have somebody talk to James, maybe the town administrator, talk to James and ensure that that piece is actually happening. I want to hear, I tried to contact him, I couldn't get through.
I'm going to have James contact me after he's talked to Eric.
Okay, I don't know if you want to go through the town administrator, but.
Well, she's on vacation right now, so I'd rather.
She'll be, she'll be back, she'll be back.
On Monday, she'll be back.
You have a Sunday.
On Monday though, but this is going to happen seven o'clock Monday morning.
Exactly.
Yes, but I mean, that's why I said I can talk to James. Do it, do it. And make sure that Eric has talked to him and they have coordinated.
Thank you.
Good, so.
Thank you.
One other question. Are the power lines across the street, or they run on your side? The public cross the street, right?
Yeah.
Are they?
I'm trying to look at it.
Because I mean, it's nothing to get a construction drop and get some electricity inside a well.
We, we cut.
Huh?
If I was gonna do the well, be a generator.
All right, cause that well should be functioning.
Yeah.
So you can refill the truck. So that really, whatever that takes, that should be really going to it.
Okay, so I got, I got, we've hired someone off-site to come in right now.
Yeah, but I mean, that.
With a truck.
There isn't a truck big enough to water all that, so they're gonna have to refill. So, gotta get that.
Oh, well.
Just a pump in the well?
No, no, they gotta talk to George Rollins today.
Oh, there isn't a pump?
There's no pump. Oh, we gotta get a pump in there, and he said it's gonna be a process.
Yeah.
We gotta get a pump in there at six hundred and five feet, for our hour now with the well. We have to redo it, get the gallons per minute to water.
Okay, I got you. I thought it was, I thought it was functioning.
And now, gotta get the pump back in there, he has it in the shop, and then get the generator.
Okay. Is he gonna take care of the generator too?
No.
They're highly available.
What's that?
They're very available.
Generator?
Yeah.
Yeah, right now, this time of year, yeah. But I think in the short term, I have the truck to take care of the problem. And while I work on the well.
Mr. Walker, where is it?
Yeah, there it is. You may need two trucks.
Right.
I don't need that much work. All right.
Are there any other resident comments? Okay.
Do we, like, under what we're allowed to do, would installing the well and generator in or bringing power be something we are allowed to do?
I think Sam had that a partial cease, or lifted a cease and desist to do well repairs before.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna ask before we.
Yeah. Natural grid stuff to bring.
It's going straight?
Hmm.
Yeah.
They did not.
What, to get it to like a temporary?
They were like, hey, it would be. They were like, months, right?
Okay.
I'm not gonna talk about it.
All right, we'll get a generator, we'll get a generator.
Um, so, I'd like to schedule the site walk in continuation. We have, kind of the date of Saturday, the eleventh, at nine AM. So the bugs could have gone back to bed. So if I could get a motion to that effect?
So.
And a second?
Second.
And I would like to continue the public hearing to August fourteenth at seven fifteen. Could I get a motion?
So.
Second.
Okay. I'd like to get a motion to schedule a site walk on the eleventh of August at nine AM.
I move that the planning board scheduled a site walk at eleven AM, or nine AM on August eleven.
Can I have a second? Second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to have a motion on a meeting, a joint meeting, between the planning board and the board of selectmen on the fourteenth at seven fifteen PM. Motion, please.
So.
So moved, a second, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I think I may have to skip that step, I think. So, I'm gonna go back to my motions and redo them and make sure everyone votes the same.
What happened?
I didn't.
Oh, you didn't?
We, all right. So could we remove the site walk on Saturday eleventh at nine?
Chuck motion?
Yeah. Motion to.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the joint meeting August fourteenth, or public hearing continuation, August fourteenth, seven fifteen.
Motion.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna do them again.
Yeah, we just, I, I forgot that call for the afterwards, because I think we were all in agreement.
Okay. Um, do we, did you do anything else? Nothing. We, we've continued the meeting. So we don't have to close this up, we're done.
Yeah.
It's done. Could I get a motion to adjourn the second?
Motion.
So, do we have to do something with the, with the mighty?
We did.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
And Bill, thank you for your patience.
No, no, no. Cover the cover. Nice to meet you.
That's right.
Give us two seconds, Bill.
Then, after the talks, there's the one that's passing by.
Um, I'll get James, have James to, you guys.
Good, 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 yes. Right.
Good to see everybody.
Okay. Thank you. And, you know, if Mike was on there this weekend, I feel he would be there.
Come on, Bill, you can just grab a seat and sit right across from us.
I just told Eric. A lot of street sweepers and stuff like that, and I thought that I could.
Yeah, you had a similar problem.
I'm like a muckwit.
He needs, he needs advice.
All right, let me give you, there's three changes, whether you deem a minor or major is up to you, but let me give you a little update of what's going on. Before the winter, I was able to pour, these would be, this is phase two, there's three existing buildings over here. Before the winter, I was able to, I was able to pour all five foundations. And and then before the winter, I was able to pour three floors. So we released three buildings and these three buildings are up. I've been waiting on national grid to get power to me, it's been tough. It's the gas, national grid, gas workers that are on strike and not the electrical workers, so. But just trying to get them to put a transformer on the poles has proven to be difficult. So these buildings are ready to go. The only thing we need to do is Bill Robitaille needs to finish up with the life safety, the, the, just the strobe lights and things on the ends of the buildings which which will go off. But all the smoke and heat detectors are in, all the lights are in, everything's done. And I've been, I paved up to about here. So the last thing to be done are these last two buildings right now. I poured the floors about a month and a half ago and they've started these buildings. And if you look at them, you'll see that they're vertical, but they're probably, you know, a month or two, probably two months away from completion. During the course of this last phase, there's been three changes. One, even though I piped underground conduit for gas to get, oh, one more thing. These two buildings are traditional drive-up buildings with the garage doors, fifty doors. These two square buildings are climate-controlled buildings. And this last building is like a specialty building where there's only fourteen units in this building. Ceiling heights are sixteen and a half feet tall. The doors are twelve by fourteen foot tall and you can drive right through. Out of the fourteen units, I think a letterman, or at least contractor type people that need, you know, the big ceiling height and lights in their space, so I'm really looking forward to getting that one done. So during the course of this, I I needed natural gas for these buildings. Well, even though I put the underground conduit in during phase one, apparently there's not enough pressure in the natural gas line to run all the way back here. So I had to switch these buildings from natural gas to propane. So right here is a propane pad. And it's just a pad, propane tank is gonna be above ground, it's not gonna be buried. I'm going to extend this guardrail down a bit to cover that, and then I'll have a fence on three sides of propane tank, so you can't see the tank. I locate, ideally, if I put the pad right here, that's closest to these two buildings, but the wetland is right there. So by sliding the pad down here, you can see them, I think forty something feet from the wetland here, and it's farther away. I've gone over this with Doug as well. That was change number one. Change number two is this constructed wetland. The theory or the theme that I seem to be led, and that's what I have, this is all ledge right here. Now, the way these constructed wetlands work is that these three buildings, the drainage goes down to the corner, drainage goes there, drainage goes to this corner, and then it goes into the constructed wetland. These last two lines go to this corner and it goes into this constructed wetland. Then the water's designed to kind of snake through, and as it snakes through, it's supposed to leach into the ground. If it doesn't leach into the ground, it goes into this catch basin and then it gets discharged via an underground pipe into the wetlands. And then if for some reason you have a really, really bad storm, there's an emergency sluice wave, which is all these rocks here. It's, it's the same design as.
The one that's up here.
The one that's.
Has that worked?
It's worked incredibly well. Actually, Doug was over one time, we were looking at it, it was a day after a couple of days of rain, and you could see there was water in here and most of the water dissipated before we even got to the plunge pool right there. So they, I mean, I, a long time ago, I worked for Adams and some other places, and they used to just have cat detention ponds, or it's just a pond that.
That's changed, it's changed.
Yeah. And these are, I think, a lot better with the ponds, you get dogs and all sorts of stuff.
Right.
Okay, so what ended up happening was, there's like a ledge that goes all the way through and then it goes all the way back here and goes through this building. We had to tan the foundation to the ledge because it was so bad. We dug down, and this ledge is really just two big knobs. It's shown as one big huckle ledge, but it's two big knobs. We dug down below the floor of the constructed wetland, and that ledge goes deeper than the floor of the constructed wetland. So even if I spent money to knock the ledge out, it's still not gonna serve its purpose, which is the water's supposed to go through the ground. So after a bunch of site meetings with the engineer, we made a few changes to this. The original constructed wetland kind of went like, it ended right about here. So we extended the constructed wetland into this area and into this hill a little bit. And we raised the berm a foot. So what it ended up doing, and what you wanna be concerned with is volume, because the impervious surfaces, which are the roofs and the pavement, that's what determines the size of the constructed wetland. So by by raising, by expanding the constructed wetland and raising the berm so that holds more water, we went from a constructed wetland that the approved constructed wetland was originally thirty-four thousand three hundred and fifty cubic feet. This one is fifty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty cubic feet, so it's quite a bit, it's quite a bit bigger. I'll let you read the letter.
Is this the attachment here?
Yep. So, you know, what what I did not want happening is this to go down in volume, obviously, you know, and it went off in volume. So that's the revision there. The last thing was, I cleared back to here as opposed to back to here. If you remember phase one, I had an area where I had all the staging and I had all the materials. Well, I forgot about that and this is what it looks like now, out back. I have a lot of rock and ledge that came from in here and came from the project, and I had that stored right here. This is also where we stored the equipment at night, the rock trucks and the excavators and the loaders. This area of ledge here is, it's more like this. It's a huge knob. I'd say it's at least that big. And we're using as a stockpile area for for the materials, which.
Should be in the crush stone business.
I'm gonna bring, I think I'm gonna bring a crusher and crush some of that stuff up.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's.
It's worth more.
It's, it's worth more. Eventually, I might come back to the, I for some reason, having a lot of people stop in saying they have boats and they have RVs and they have campers. Believe it or not, these are people as far down as Lynn, Mass, that go camping or boating in the area. And they go camping in Maine and New Hampshire and Vermont, and they wanna be able to drive in, pick up their camper, go to the highway and go north. I have other people that boat in this area and they don't wanna have to trailer their boat an hour all the way home, they'd rather leave it here. So eventually, I I need to get these buildings done and occupied before I even start thinking about what to do next. But. So, so those are the three changes.
Okay, propane can, can, construct, change the constructed wetland and something.
Clear a hundred and twenty-five more feet. Now, in in his, in the engineer's letter, he addresses this. And what his comment was about the wetland is that this is about, I'm gonna say five acres. And when there wasn't any pavement or trees here, this side drains down to this wet, this is all wet, and this is all wet. This side trained down to this wetland, this side trained down to that wetland. And you had five acres of property draining into either side of the wetland. Now, by putting pavement and rooftops, all of this is draining into this constructed wetland and no longer draining down there and no longer training down there. So all of this area is now draining into here and then it either dissipates into the earth or goes out sluice way into the wetland. But the design of this is, you know, to get it to perk into the ground.
I know this sounds stupid. This hasn't been built yet.
Yeah, it's.
It's built?
It's not built a hundred percent, no.
So what approval, if it's already built, what approvals are you looking for?
It's, it's, well, the approval that, you know, I made it a little bit bigger and went into here.
And that we could see?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, maybe, I mean, I'm not, maybe we should take a look at the site. What do you think?
Yeah, come on over.
And Doug had seen all this.
Well, hasn't, hasn't been presented officially to.
I should, I should yet.
So why don't we set up, set up something and we'll just come out during the week? And, you know, it's not, anybody who can make it can make it. It's, I don't, right? Something like that, like we've done in the past with you.
If I hope can't come together, just come in.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. But let's, because we've all of a sudden got a lot of meetings and site things and this and that, so what's your schedule on this?
I'm, tomorrow's not good, Friday's good, and then next week, Wednesday is, Wednesday and Thursday are tough.
Not good, a bad week next week completely.
A good Friday, this Friday.
This Friday?
Yeah, I am.
Not particularly.
Well, no, I said, no, 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 whatever time you're going.
I think next week's okay, Wednesday's Thursday.
Yeah, next week, except for Wednesday and Thursday for me.
There you go. How about the week after? What's that, the twenty?
Twenty-third.
Third. Monday is good.
So the other thing that's happened here is this was just expanded, right? And and some of the ledge was left.
How about, I'd like to see the site anyway. So the twenty-third, I can do the twenty-third. You can, well, you could just stop by and take a look, you know? That's what I'm trying to say, is that we'll try to do as many as can get out there on a certain date, and then everyone else just go up and take a look. Is that all right?
Yeah, I can give you my cellphone and just call. Because the gates are usually shut.
Right.
And I'm there every day, you know, monitoring the construction.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm usually around nine to.
So we wanna game, wanna look towards the.
Six one seven, eight nine nine, zero 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 three.
Twenty-third, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Wanna do that? Can you do that, Martha?
You're just be everybody watching television films all the time.
I wanna change it now.
All right.
I'm putting it on my calendar. I'll let Doug know too, and we'll see if.
All right, July 23rd at nine AM?
That sounds good.
It's not an official meeting and it's not official anything, we're just gonna go and talk, right? Okay, I'm not gonna post it. All right, site walk for information. I'd like, I'd really like to see the site anyway, you know, 'cause I.
It's, it's nice now that I had it paved.
I like your sign.
Oh, thanks, that's true.
It is, it's a great sign.
It's nice that, before I had the same issues that Eric was having with with the dust, but, you know, we're far enough back. And, but, you know, once you, once you cap that with, there's, there's the brick, crushed brick on top of that, then you won't have the problem with dust. So that, you know, once you, if he has hammering to do, it's kinda, it's a lot of work. And, you know, the one machine that breaks down the most is that camera work.
Oh, yeah.
So, all right, Monday?
Monday, that's nine o'clock in the morning.
These pictures were taken two days ago, so.
When you say you layered back there another hundred and twenty-five feet, what was there?
Twenty-third. Ledge.
July 23rd.
The other problem I've been having is.
July 23rd.
Yep. It was a lot there. The other problem I've been having is when you clear an area like this, now all the trees on the edge are susceptible to blowing over. And when you come over, you'll see there's all, there's trees all through here and all through here that, you know, were once protected by all the trees in here, but then when you take the trees out, the other trees.
Have to get tough.
Yeah, I have to get.
I have to look tough.
So, leave these with you?
Yeah. Now, the other thing we talked about was the extension.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
That we would have to put on.
Do the letter, I haven't done a letter.
I think we need a letter.
I will send a letter.
Do you need a letter?
Send a letter, we can act on our next meeting.
Is it retroactive, like your original expiration?
Well, it was, it was extended to June 1st, so it had to be retroactive.
On June 1st.
Yeah.
If you need more than that, then.
Yeah, I just have these last two to do. And there's materials stored here and there's materials stored here. As soon as they use those materials, then we can do the drainage and then I can get this paved and be done with it. And instead, I'm gonna, we're gonna rent a crusher and crush some of this material. Because it's, it's, it has no value like that. And even if I just stockpile it, what I was gonna do with some of the material is that, this is the old driveway right here. I was going, right now the slope on that driveway is like that. I was going to improve the slope like that. So if you need to get a fire truck in here, you could. And I was gonna take some of that crushed material and put it there, so if the fire truck had to come up, you know, they could access the site through.
I remember how steep that is.
Yeah.
Bill, what do you need the propane for?
Because I can't get after gas to these two climate-controlled buildings for heating, for heating and cooling.
So you're gonna, you're gonna propane eat those? A thousand gallons?
It's a five hundred gallons. Keep in mind with storage, some, when people call it climate control, some people will keep their buildings in the winter at forty and in the summer at eighty. I keep these at fifty to fifty-five in the winter and in the summer at seventy-two. And there's humidity sensors in the ceiling, so if the humidity gets above fifty-five percent, the dehumidification turns on, which is really the most important part of climate control. Most people don't dehumidify, they just heat and cool and they have fans in the ceiling to blow out the hot air.
Which reset point for the dehumidifier?
Fifty-five, fifty-five percent humidity.
That's good.
Yeah. Well, in the first building, I have, I have a few pianos, I have some artists' work, and there's an antiques guy. And actually, there's, there's quite a few businesses from NUPR and NUPR Corp in the existing, I think I counted almost fifty people that have existing, whether a restaurant or a CP firm that needs to store documents, it's a little bit of everything.
That makes sense.
Yeah. So.
Also sat across the street.
Highly questionable. I don't know either.
Peace.
He's a piece of work.
He has a lot of work to be there done. There's a lot of work to be done there as well. Because I know his, well, the grade in the bank goes down quite a bit, so we've gotta use that and fill. Some of it's good, fill some of it's gloomy material that he can use in a bank or a slope. And he knows all that. And, you know, that work hopefully gets done in the near future.
All right, Bill, thank you.
You leave you the photos too?
Sure, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
It's good to see you.
Me too.
I think the only other thing that we, since it's nine thirty-five, is that I can read into the payroll warrants for town planner and planning administrative assistants. Payroll eighteen twenty-five for pay period ending six nine twenty eighteen and PR eighteen twenty-six for pay period ending six twenty-three twenty eighteen and PR eighteen twenty-seven for pay period ending six thirty. Town planner only, was signed by myself. And expense invoices for Verizon Wireless on six twenty-six and Martha Taylor employee, expense reimbursements on six thirty, all signed. We had a town planner report, we had a master plan report, but I'm wondering.
Just one thing for my town planner report. We got a legal minister of public hearing for another marijuana product manufacturer operation in Maui. And the public hearing is next Wednesday, July 18th at seven fifty. So if anybody's interested, I'll send this around to anybody.
Yeah, please send it, please send it. Please send it. Anything else? You've got the stuff I just, I sent you two things on the, on the CIP. The first was the document, the second was the, you know, the.
Implementation.
Implementation plan, so. We should take a look at that. And then I'm gonna see you tomorrow morning and we're gonna go over.
The maps.
The maps with your.
Maps or.
After your, so you're gonna give me a buzz?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody wanna bring, is that okay? I think that covers most of the things we had on the agenda.
Yeah, I got one other thing, which I'll just send around to everybody. It's about a municipal issue, an issue to affordable housing, and I got that from Angie today. She sent me a picture of her baby, he's just adorable.
Very nice. Okay, let's have a call for an adjournment.
So moved.
So moved with excitement. Seceded with excitement.
Even more.
Voted on with excitement.
Affirmative.
Thank you all.